I'll call the Town of Northwood Planning Board meeting to order for May 10, 2018, present. Beth Boudreau, Selectments Rep., Betty Smith, Lee Baldwin, Vice Chair, Chair Bob Strobel. Well, I'm really drawing blanks. Susan Austin.
Town staff.
Lita Smith and James Burdine, Town Staff. We have, just talking about it, it's been a long day. We have minutes of March 22 to finish up. And if I recall correctly, the only changes we made were for review were the Camp Yavna bit.
I think we skipped over the Camp Yavna because that was what.
That's what we wanted changed for the review or however.
So you made it up to Camp Yavna.
Okay. And I would take a motion if somebody wanted to make one.
Move to accept minutes as.
I believe the motion here would be to remove from the table. I believe these were tabled.
Were they tabled?
They were tabled, yes. Motion to untable.
Okay.
Minutes of March 22.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion on minutes of March 22, specific to the Camp Yavna section, or anything else that anybody else has found. Going once, going twice.
On each four. Line 20 and 21, there's too many "they"s in there and I'm not sure who were referring. I think we have at least, it gets a little confusing.
There is a lot of "they."
I think it all refers to the applicant.
Does it? It can't because the applicant's not making future approvals.
And they're not going to take action.
Okay.
Maybe, I can't remember.
Maybe if we changed it to say when they request future approvals, then it would refer to them.
I think Hal was talking about the board, so I can change the "they"s to.
The board.
The board.
Yeah. Okay, the first one, make it go.
Mr. Burdine, yes.
What lines, I just lost it.
20 and 21. I think we could change the "they"s to "we."
Yeah.
And now "we" need to make sure, we as the town, need to make sure they, we are thinking about this when we make future approvals.
I think the board might make more sense.
Okay.
Simply because it may not always be clear what is Hal talking and what is Linda talking.
Okay.
And I wouldn't think that Linda would be using the "we" to refer to the board.
Well, I was thinking because we were talking about the building inspector as well as board, then we were referring to "we" as the Town of Northwood.
Now I'm too loud.
Wow. Okay.
I think the board will work because then James goes on to mention that the enforcement issue is separate.
So if we read into line 18, Mr. Kreider asked us, the board was looking for a way to resolve the discrepancy, or is this just a case of a permit being issued and now the board needs to make sure they are thinking, we are thinking, they are thinking about this when they make future approvals? So I propose on line 19, we change the first "they" to "the board was."
And then the board needs.
And now.
Is, because it hasn't happened yet, but the board is looking for a way to resolve.
Yes. And then on line 20, and now the board needs, to make sure they are thinking about this when they make future approvals.
And then on line 22?
I don't think so, because I think all those "they"s refer to the board.
Yes.
And it's a short enough clause that.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes it a little more clear.
Oh, are you talking about the end of the "they" on the end of the sentence of, or end of line 22? Ms. Elsmith states that it was both "they need to."
Yeah, they need to address this and then how they handle it in the future is separate.
Okay, so change that "they" to "the board needs," to address this and then how they handle it in the future is separate. Okay. Good call.
I'm trying to find the "they"s and change the ones that are appropriate to the board, just to clear up the confusion, because I just found another one.
Oh, okay. Anything else on March 22? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of March 22, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. And for this case, voting designation is all member of presence. And Ms. Boudreau, just for reference generally, if I hear silence, not criticism.
Why is it aye?
No, 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 but I'm just saying, just in general, if I hear silence, it means assent. Provided somebody does say something. Okay. Since minutes of the 22nd, we have minutes of the 12th, and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion on April 12, 2018 minutes.
It was.
And if I did end up being chair again, but that's okay.
Wasn't as short as the meeting afterwards, though.
No, true. We didn't have a meeting afterward.
I know.
That's right.
It was really short.
It didn't exist.
It was, it was out of quorum.
Okay. Hearing none, or do we need a couple of minutes?
I think that is spelling errors.
Other people are reading, so we'll give it a couple of minutes. That's fine.
On page two, um, I like along about 22 and 23, there's a bunch of "they"s again.
They being the planning board again.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. To line 22, if, assuming that the board receives this application. And then all "they"s are back to the prior noun, which is the board. That should be okay. And line 25, I'd suggest the very last word, the last "they" be board members. But I'm unclear as to the "they" on 27, or starting at line 27. They wouldn't want any comments from the board before they have received an application, let alone accepted it as complete.
The Granite Street.
The applicant.
The applicant, yep.
Okay. The applicant wouldn't want any comments from the board before.
I believe that's quoting me, and I think what I said was, "we wouldn't want," as in, "it would be trouble for the town if people."
Okay.
Made comments that got back to the applicant.
Right. I understand, I understand the point. Just think of, think of how it.
Not sure.
You could change it to the board, because the board wouldn't want.
Or it could, we could just say, it could be a problem for the town if board members made comments, or if there were comments from the board.
Or how about just the board's part of it is gone and just say, the board should not comment before they have received an application.
That would simplify it.
Yes.
Or board members, because the board itself doesn't.
Board member should not comment on an application before it's been received. All those in favor of the, assuming the motion and second are for amended minutes, all those in favor of April 12 minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Do the business at hand. We have two new cases. Which should be in your packet. And I think James passed out his staff comments on 1803 to begin with, on both comment, both applications, but. So this is, was for a little while Ma's and mine, it's the old restaurant shop, whatever.
No.
No. Oh, no, no, sorry.
That was the last time you saw this applicant.
Same owners, same owners.
First church.
Yes.
There it is.
Triggered on the name.
Same water mount, see if it's a hander.
Where are they getting 25 spaces?
That's a question for them.
Get down a picture.
Is it like 25 sections that you can sub-rent, maybe?
They have park, they must have parking in the, in Hanaford.
Well, this count here is 25 spaces.
No, I know that. I'm saying that, but if you look.
But if you look at the parking lot, you cannot park two rows of cars like this because there's no room.
So, I think I'm confused by two things. If you look at the hand-drawn site plan and you look at the map geo.
Yeah.
They appear to be including in the parcel that they've outlined on this site plan, part of the abutting parcel that is owned by State of New Hampshire DOT, and part of the abutting Church Street right-of-way in what they've drawn as this parcel. And they, something weird is going on with where those parking spaces are depicted, and I think they are thinking of, people park on the DOT piece and on the Church Street right-of-way, therefore that's our parking on our site. Which.
As well.
May be a de facto how it's used, but that is something that, if that is actually what they're depicting, should probably be corrected. Because I'm assuming that the septic is in that parking lot island.
Mm-hmm. And it's a mound.
And is not paved over.
Correct.
So where they're showing that septic, if they have a row of parking in front of that septic, that is literally on Church Street.
The septic is on the back porch.
She's showing it.
Well.
Back peninsula, if you will.
Right.
Yeah. There's a little white dot that's to the right.
And it's a mound, you're not parking.
Yeah, that's definitely. And. Interesting. Definitely some, so that would be one question I have for the applicant, as you pointed out, is parking coinciding or coordinating the hand-drawn sketch with map geo. Just note for the record that, Hal Kreider, that the projector and map geo are being used and you're not here to witness it.
So, I think what I could suggest is that staff will reach out to the applicant before the next meeting, and we can see if we can clarify some of this confusion about the boundaries and parking spaces, and see if we can have it cleaned up, planned for the next meeting.
I would suggest, if you hadn't thought of it already, that maybe we just print out that slide and say, draw, go ahead, draw however they want to do it. And then obviously we'll have to revise our calculation for required parking for, based on retail square footage. Or however, was it it's all retail?
They're proposing all retail.
Is that only square feet?
Online auction.
Okay.
Is there a minimum number of parking spaces you have to have?
Yes.
Is 25 the number?
Uh, it's based on how square footage of use. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. But that also might be something that staff might want to guide them through, is that if they can't math meet the requirements, that some thinking be done about either the square footage of each use, or waiver, or however, whatever the, whatever functions, methods there are to obtain that. I seem to recall, and I don't know any details of it, whether it's factual or not, that the, when this was an operable church, that there was an agreement, if not an easement, with Hanaford to use their parking lot on Sunday mornings, but I could not, I don't know if that's factual or not.
I.
And I would assume that is because it's no longer that owner.
When I checked with Linda, she did not recall any easement to cross Hanaford. So that would be.
Well, that was for the street fair, this one here. I don't know if one.
I, I think if such an easement, whether it's for mutual parking, or to cross and recross exists, we would want to see a copy.
Yeah.
So that's why, as of right now, my comments are just that they should clarify whether an easement exists.
Exactly.
But I would suggest that we would either want a copy of any easement, if it does exist, or we would want a note to be added somewhere that patrons of this site would be instructed to access using via Church Street, not the Hanaford parking lot, if there is any. And then from there, as Rick would say, we have no control over what people actually do.
Correct. We can just make it, we can do our due diligence, but. Anything that the board wants to see from the applicant before the next meeting? I would also encourage Town Staff when they print this out, or however they do it, to see if.
I'll do it.
If you could find a scale that would work, whether it's shown on, okay, there it is.
Yeah, it's hard to read up here.
Perfect, okay. I didn't see it on there, but yeah, that would be fine, because I would, uh, let's, let's just say that, I want to make sure that the number of, or the lots are actually sized at nine by 18, or the parking spaces are sized by nine by 18, or nine by 20, whatever they are. I know they're nine foot, but, okay. Since we have map geo, you can do an aerial, but you can also, as always, encourage people to do a drive-by.
Definitely coming in for this case. Take a look.
So their, but their, their lot is, has the corner cutoff in the front by Route 4.
I believe that diagonal is part of the abutting parcel that's owned by DOT that was formerly part of the 202 right-of-way.
Okay, okay.
That was, that was probably the.
Church Street.
Radius.
Church Street used to be 202.
It's marked on here as the old US Route 202 on the site plan.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
I say, well, before, I've been up in here.
Seeing a tractor drilling in the 50th.
Yeah, that was interesting for the drivers.
Okay.
That was changed in 2002, 2003, I think.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Really, that's not that long ago.
No, it hasn't. I was in Deerfield, but I certainly don't remember that.
Yep.
Oh. Okay. I'll take the word of the old timers who have been here.
For parking, I'm estimating that they would need 12.6 spaces, so we would round that to 13.
Okay.
So they don't need all 25 that they are claiming.
Right.
But we won't.
I'm pretty sure you can get 12 spaces in there, but really, 25 is not happening.
Yeah. I would also, I'm wondering about, like, a wheel stop or something for the septic mound, so that depending on how they decide to lay out the traffic and the traffic patterns, you might.
There's a fence, but I don't know how close to the edge of the parking lot it is. They, they had it, kids, they had the kids playing on the septic mound.
Yeah. All more reason for it to do a drive-by. Reason I know, or some of my concern over that is that, let's say, it was not me, but somebody I know decided that their, the back of their car was longer than they thought it was and backed into the septic mound. Didn't do much damage to the car, but did a good bit of damage to the septic field. Okay. So we'll see this in two weeks. Any further comments from Town Staff, or?
That's what we.
Take it as a no.
No.
And we'll move on to 1804.
That's one.
And I believe we have the applicant's representative here, so if we do have any questions or information.
So there are one or two things that I would want to walk the board through. In the absence of a quorum at the last meeting, staff sat down with the applicant to talk through this application, instead of going through a conceptual appearance before the As part of those discussions, we worked with the applicant to come up with a list of waivers based on what they were proposing to provide. They have requested those waivers. I did want to point out that the site plan regulations require developments to, quote, "make adequate provision" for things like roads and access, water supply, sanitary sewage disposal. When we were talking through those things with the applicant, they mentioned that, for example, the water and sewer was done, was planned for the entire 286 acre parcel, and that changes on. changes on this one small campsite would, wouldn't change the overall usage of that parcel in that system. So for things like that, it felt to me more like they were claiming that adequate provision had been made rather than that they did not need to submit materials on that. So I advised the applicant that they did not need waiver requests for those items because they were suggesting to the board that they had made that adequate provision. So I would say if there is material that the board would want to see to help with a determination that that adequate provision has in fact been made, it would be best to discuss that tonight, so we can give the applicant time to provide it before the next meeting. If for some reason, the board would prefer to see a waiver request for one or more of those items, instead of discussing whether adequate provision has been made, we could also give the applicant an opportunity to submit those requests in writing before the next meeting.
Correct me if I'm, or stop me if I'm getting into content. But as far as waivers for item B goes, I'm making the assumption that this would be, when you say hand-edited, essentially notes, aerial photo printed out and highlighted saying, you know, cabin, group of cabins, group of this.
They, so they have submitted the site plans that are actually better than hand-drawn plans. We gave them the list of waivers before, I think we saw the full detail of what Dave was going to be able to put together. So I, I think in this case, you're not an engineer, right, Dave? You're not an engineer, right? So essentially, the waiver would be to not have an engineer's stamp on the plans. Even though they are more sophisticated than most hand-drawn plans tend to be.
Thank you for that.
And then I did also want to point out that the recommended, recommended conditions of approval are on the back of the staff report, just in case nobody turned the page. As I mentioned, since they have the entire water and sewer designed for the full site, and the town does have a copy of that on file, we didn't really consider there to be a change of use in this area. It's just a change of layout, so we're not recommending any sort of confirmation from a septic designer. Similarly, since this is in the middle of a very large parcel, we would consider any of those roads to the site to be internal access drives, so we wouldn't need a driveway permit, and we wouldn't need confirmation with the town or DOT. So our current recommended conditions are only related to changes to the plan.
One of the things that was brought up, and I struggle with a bit, but I don't have a good solution for it yet, is like an overall master plan or something.
We talked with the applicant, they do have a full plan of the, the entire camp. And per our discussions, they are willing to come in and file what would probably be it might be a major, I'm not sure if it would be on the major or minor, but it, it would be pretty big. I would guess it may well be a major site plan. To give us a full master site plan for the site that we could then do future amendments to in cases like this and make it quick and easy.
Okay. That's good to hear.
As part of that discussion, they are hoping to work quickly on this case, which is why we were happy to accept the smaller campsite specific one first.
Any questions from the other members for tonight? Anything you want to, additional you want to see? Or ask as far as just content for, since we have Mr. Tistic in here?
There's nothing for electricity, I would say.
I don't, I think there are, there is electric going into these. Yep?
There's electric in that area, and part of my discussion with Dale, the current electric is hanging from trees. So it's conditional putting these buildings up, it's putting in holes and removing the triplex wiring, the holes.
Okay.
Removing it off the trees.
There, that's okay. So that puts it in reference. You sure you're not a surveyor? You sure you're not an engineer? You do pretty well for-
He's just good at drawing.
Like all your notes are labeled, everything is, is, it's pretty good.
I used to spell wrong.
You definitely- I was gonna say.
One N.
That's an engineer.
They don't teach you spelling in engineer school.
No, they don't. Let's call engineers with one N. Okay, questions?
Those tent platforms look pretty uncomfortable.
That depends. Depends.
It depends on if you're over one of the holes or not.
They're kicking cots.
Depends on the thickness of your mattress. It's good ventilation. Okay. One thing that I'm not going to emphasize that it's mandatory, but it would be very helpful for me, would be to tie the, essentially your page two, your aerial of where you show the Shawanda campsite, Shawana Wanda, sorry, to the EX1 page, I don't know which number it is, looks like it's six, the detail, the half acre. Either by like putting in the main road or the edge of the lot line or something to that effect. Does that make sense? How I explain it? It's the next, I think it's the next page, Linda. Yeah. Nope, next, try, yes, the second, if you, on the second page, you have the circle indicating where the Shawana Wanda is. Am I pronouncing that right?
The distance from Blake Hill.
Right, but there's no main camp road shown anywhere.
Yeah. This is right here, right along the edge here, that dark, right here is the road coming down. And then it goes off to those two campsites, you can see the little.
Okay, okay. Oh, oh, now, okay, now I see it. Thank you, sorry, never mind.
Well, it's black and white, it's not shiny colors.
Well, I know, but I'm okay with that. I didn't recognize it as, as the road. Okay. So that .35 is then the camp, the .35 miles to Blake's Hill Road is through the camp entrance.
From Blake's Hill Road, .35 miles down the hill.
Yep.
There's an access road that goes left there.
Yep.
And that will lead you to the Shenandoah area.
Okay. Okay. I was gonna say Shenandoah, that's not quite right. That's okay. Okay, looks good. I think we're good. I don't steer anything from my colleagues. We'll take a look. At it, is there any, anybody want to do, have any need to do a drive-by or a walk down or something, that would be the time to ask if you needed to, wanted to. I assume you're in off-season.
Pardon me?
I assume you're in off-season at this point in time.
Yep, they don't occupy until July 1.
Okay.
And there's staff doing maintenance.
Sure, sure. Okay.
There's a ranger, if you wanted to do a walk-by, it would be, the ranger's house is right, the first house as you enter the camp. And there's either a phone number of somebody there all the time, just to let them know that you're there.
Okay. I'm, might do so, I don't know if anybody else wants to. I always like the, a feel for what's on the ground. And I, I know I've been in there, but it's been many years. Anything else from anybody else? We'll see in two weeks.
Yeah, I have one question.
Joe, well-
Sure.
Good, yeah, go ahead.
The lot that's on label, I'm almost positive it's the one up next to my house, which is owned by the Boy Scouts.
Uh, this little square one? Yeah, that's the one next to your house.
And that is owned by the council, that's why there's not a label there.
Would you mind putting a label on it, just because it's a different parcel? Thanks.
The one on the inside corner of Lake Hill?
Yes, closest to Gulf Road. No, they got the Boy Scouts and then, right next door to my house, too soon. And I believe when you talk about the 286 acres, that that parcel is indulged into that.
Oh. I think either we would want that parcel also indicated as part of the application. So we could just write it on to the application form. Or we would want it listed as in a butter. Either the applicant, application is covering all of the Boy Scouts property, which is two parcels, or the application is covering the big parcel.
However you do your math, would be my opinion.
Okay, so if I amend the sheet, you can just put the Boy Scouts on the lot and give me a revised form of that.
Well, if you referred to-
If you put the map and lot number on the application form, I don't think you'd need to change anything on the plans. Well, it, it's on the same side of the street. Or should all of these people be named already? They're all across the street. Those are just the two ways that I see you could do it. You could either put an address block over here, nothing's happening on it.
Yeah, just putting an address block.
I think the address block would be the simplest.
My point with the math was that if you referred to the 286 and it includes that acre, you would be slightly off, but I don't know.
Well, you don't, you have a tax map, you had a dotted line with common ownership.
Yeah.
No, it's separate, not a lot.
Why don't you click on the ownership?
So it's actually second item, when it was, I believe, when the transportation ownership was, was it not?
Scroll down and, that's okay. Just click on it again.
It's still up.
It's still up.
Over here?
Click on this.
Sorry, so easy to use.
Get that out. And click on the, no, no, on the, the one that you currently have up. Sorry.
No, I'm not sure.
No, I'm not sure.
Oh, it's still up, why do we don't want help anymore? Okay, any ideas?
How do you get rid of it?
I don't know. Up, let's see. I did click it. Ah, yes, I talked to my computers, even if they're not my computer. I want... Selections. There we go. 286 acres, so your math is fine. Okay. At least according to what MapGeo has, or SRPC, we can blame, well, what's her name?
It's, it's our, it's our data.
Sorry, we can blame Rachel, she's no longer going to be with SRPC after next Friday.
Okay, we can definitely blame her. Only, only reason I deal with those details is that if, once it's on paper...
No, she lives up in Portland and she got...
Arguments for, while it's stated here correctly, it's stated here incorrectly. I don't like to have those kinds of things hanging out, so we should be good.
Okay.
Ready to move on?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you. Okay. So I have some signatures to do, which are best done during a meeting. So we had a voluntary merger notice.
Oh.
With the Shore Drive?
That is, yeah, if you would have to install that.
Sure.
That came back, it was Pentagon, not a lot number.
Okay.
Sorry to have it installed.
So I just need, oh, yeah. Uh, today's date or prior date?
That's corrective, so put today's date.
Okay. Dave?
I'll have Diane do it.
That?
Oh, he's in a better mood now. That is just a plan that we found, that didn't have a signature, that Bill Wormill, you signed the Mylar, but...
Oh.
Bill takes his own, and...
Okay.
But for some reason, the paper wouldn't get signed.
Okay.
We couldn't find a sound paper copy, recorded or divided.
It's, yeah, it's all done, we just, we need a signature.
I'm just looking at the, uh...
It's 2016.
Right, exactly, I'm not gonna play. Right. Now that's scary, that, obviously I've been sitting in this chair too long.
Or I was new and I didn't catch it.
Okay. There's that.
Thank you.
Do you have any updates for the entire board on the master plan, that you can insist under silence?
On the master plan, I think what makes the most sense for moving this forward is that I will bring a, a chapter or two a month and hand them out, and you can take them home and read them, and then we can come back and talk about them. I think that makes the most sense to actually work on them at the workshop, so I'm going to try and get on a schedule starting at the next meeting.
11 Stratford, or was that today's date that you'd sign it?
Can you get online and look up?
What am I looking for?
You already signed, one of those one, that wasn't where I moved over and came about this one, that should be the same date as the...
No, 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 this is, this is the one that, he sold it before meeting all the conditions.
This is Fahy?
Fahy, yes. What date, should, should he just put today's date on it?
Sure, that's fine.
The paper copies are for Main Street.
Right, this is different, this is the Fahy one, closing that one off, so that would be today, just in terms of looked at that, not the condition.
Mm-hmm. Go check.
Uh, master plan, so I will be bringing items probably for the vision and population section for you to read at the next meeting, and then we can actually take some time to talk through them at the workshop next month.
You signed the paper and the Mylar, right?
No. Nope, the paper is blank. The paper is blank. There's just the Mylar.
The paper is...
Just a piece of paper.
It's just a piece of paper.
Oh, this paper, God, it's big, interesting.
I'll be, I'll be here, if you wanna take it home now, I'll be just...
Yeah, one more.
That's okay.
The other thing that we wanted to make the board aware of, that we will be bringing back at your next meeting, was the Moynihan-Senkowitz Barber Shop. We received a letter from a septic designer saying that they could not locate a state-approved septic design, and so what they did instead was calculate the usage of the prior use onsite, and calculate the usage of the new use onsite, and compare whether, you know, what would have to happen for the new use to have less or equal septic usage than the old usage. We thought that that letter was sufficiently different from what we intended in the conditions, that to accept that would be a discretionary decision by the board. In order to make any discretionary or not purely administrative decisions to finish off conditions of approval, we have to have a public hearing. So we will be putting it on the agenda for the full meeting. We will have the letter for you to see for that meeting, and you can determine whether it is sufficient to satisfy conditions, or whether you would amend the conditions.
Which place is this?
This was the barber shop that we saw in October or November, not the one in January.
21?
Which is beside Brown Engineering.
The one beside Brown Engineering was the January one, I believe.
Is this the one that hasn't opened up yet?
Correct.
This is the one in...
Butchers.
Yeah.
Butcher shop one.
Everybody thinks it's a butcher shop.
Okay.
Butcher is not.
Yes. Okay.
Well, nobody's seen how she barbers yet, so it could be.
Hmm. You probably won't find out that she does men only, supposedly.
No, that, this is the guy, the one that's opened is the girl.
The one that's open, Route 4 is the woman.
She is a woman.
And Butchers is a guy.
Is a man, yeah.
Right, but they're barber shops, they only do...
Right.
Not beauty slots, so they only...
They do barber cuts.
Barbers will do women straight cuts, some of them will.
Okay.
A lot of them will argue with you, but they'll, they'll vote do it eventually.
My understanding is that they, they do shaves and hips. Not saying that women can't shave their face, but... Yes, those that, they won't do it on meat, but...
Did 321?
So...
I think so.
Yes, it is.
What, it's 3, 321?
Didn't realize how far back it went.
What is 325? Is that it? About 321?
There's parking lot in the back.
Right, 'cause there used to be apartments, it was like two little stores years ago with apartments down back.
The apartment was, there was an apartment upstairs.
Was it upstairs?
Yeah, that's the one by...
He needed this information, it was before she bought it.
That was out of context. Yeah, there's access around back.
John Dodge owned that, didn't he, like years ago?
I think so, yeah, I think it was Dodge Heating was there for a while.
Yep, yep.
Okay. I'll ask about this afterward, but, well, actually, is there title block, is there someplace for me to sign on this? I'm looking without that, that I've looked on page one and page two, and there's no place I've seen for planning board chair signature.
They didn't give you a title block? That's not very nice of them.
And it's also worth redoing if they didn't. And it wouldn't surprise me for the person who did it.
What, that they left the title block?
Is that his signature over there?
That's his signature, that's the, yeah, that's his signature.
Interesting, they have place for boxes.
Oh, it's on page four.
Oh, it's on the...
There you go.
It's on the last page, sorry, I'm, he couldn't find where to sign it.
Yeah, it was part of this, and I looked myself, make sure there was... He just wants to make you work.
He does, but I find that, I mean, I not peed his chair at all.
Just sign it.
It really big.
I thought there was, the intent was to put it on the cover.
No, not if the page to be signed is the third or fourth page. It could be existing conditions, you're not going to sign that.
Okay, okay.
Is that a subdivision or site plan?
Uh, subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't, you don't, there's only one.
I haven't signed too many sub... I haven't signed too many subdivisions.
No, we have an action.
So when, we're doing a public hearing for this, at the next meeting? Or, no? You have time to notice.
Is one piece the subdivision and the other one putting it back together? Or is it...
Oh, yeah, this is it. Yeah, that was that application.
Yeah.
Sorry, Gary.
So is this, this is the one where they put it back together the other way?
No. Virgued and then split.
And now you know where to look?
Yes, I do.
I said Mr. L. Smith, mumble, mumble, mumble.
Put that in your minutes.
Mumbling and...
Inaudible. Better than grumbling.
Those, those were the two big items that we had.
There are your signatures, there's your pen back.
Put stuff away.
Yep, okay, uh, as far as Chair's report goes, uh, the, what was OEP Spring Conference for Planning and Zoning was two weekends ago, I think. It was the, according to the openers, the best-attended one they've had in a while. Content was pretty good. There were some initially shocking things that the, as far as legal changes goes, the way the presenter phrased it, he said that alternates had to be elected, or had to be appointed, or, or, let me rephrase that, had to be chosen in the same manner that official members were chosen, which, when people started reading, you could hear it in the group of saying, you know, "Holy cow, we have to put alternates on the ballot."
Is that gonna happen?
No, 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 and that was, that was a misinterpretation, he left off one word. It means that if Ms. Boudreaux is absent and she wants to appoint an alternate, it has to be another elected select person. It can't be a town staff or something. Yes, it's always been that. But, uh, no, it hasn't always been that.
No, only another select that can sit in for a select.
For, yes, they clarified the law.
Okay.
There were some towns that were appointing not-elected members to substitute for an elected member. So that was the legal decision. That being said, we saw, I saw the ad for ZBA alternates, and I saw the ad for, I think there was another set of alternates.
Was it an ad, or was it a...
Or a notice, or...
A narrative. Did my Judge Judy catch somebody's eye?
I don't remember.
That was the intent.
Okay.
Somebody tried to read it.
I know, I know there was a note, a public notice in the, in the Sun about ZBA al, yeah, I can't remember.
Oh, I think...
There was something.
Yes.
The planning board was, planning board was left off.
Yeah, please put that out on the airwaves, we need zoning board alternates.
We also need planning board alternates.
Yes. We're a little more desperate.
Yes, it's ZBA, yes, I understand that.
It's on the webpage, too.
And I saw it on the forum, too.
An article or a note or an ad?
A letter, maybe?
It was, it looked like this was a, 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 it was a Judge Judy, huh?
Okay, well, anyway, anyway. If people are, are aware of somebody who has an interest in land use in town, or they're in general trying to have expressed an interest in volunteering for town functions, alternates are generally a, a way to meet that need on both sides, and it doesn't entail putting your name on the ballot quite yet, but it's a...
What night does zoning board meet?
It's the, what, the fourth Monday?
Yes.
Just so I can spread the word. Who meets on Tuesday?
Conservation?
Conservation.
Or this Lockman?
Yep.
Thank you.
Police Commission?
Everybody.
Everybody?
Not everybody.
We all get together on Tuesdays.
Whereas a budget is Wednesday.
Typically, a lot of Wednesdays.
School board is Thursday, planning board's Thursday. Okay.
Then there's all of writing other, little, little...
Well, and recuperation, highway advisory is the last Wednesday of the month.
Except they've been using facilities dates.
Yes. We had to...
They have recreation.
Yep, yep, bunch of others, okay. Anything else tonight? We will see you while I entertain a motion if we need it to adjourn at 8:47.
So moved.
7:47.
Like, wait, eight?
Sorry.
Wow, it's awfully light out.
That's what I was thinking.
To admit, the car that I, the car that I drove, today, the clock has not been adjusted for daylight saving on.
Oh, no.
Like, dying in the winter.
That's why I was like...
It's usually dark in the winter.
Yeah.
But it doesn't matter, 'cause spring can't be...
In the winter, it's over before we even begin.
Do we gotta vote?
No, we don't need to vote for adjournment if everybody agrees.
Okay.